SJC 12901, Alexander Styler, the Linfield Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you, and we will hear from Mr. Reardon.
Good morning, may it please the court. My name is Les Reardon and I represent Alex Styler. Mr. Styler appeals to the decision of the Land Court, which upheld an order of the Building Inspector of the Town of Linfield to cease and desist his advertising and short-term rentals of his personal residence. This case presents an issue as to whether you can prohibit such rentals by characterizing those rentals as a tourist house or a boarding house. Mr. Styler's position is that the localities must pass express restrictions and limitations relative to short-term rentals, and in fact, in this case, the Town of Linfield did, but not until after the Building Inspector's order. A subsidiary issue that was raised by the Land Court, which I think is unnecessary to its decision and premature, is whether a short-term rental provided through an internet platform such as Airbnb or HomeAway can ever become qualified prior non-conforming use within the protection of Chapter 48, Section 6. Mr. Styler's position is that it's expressly within the protections of that chapter, and that we think that any restrictions or limitations are destined within those imposed by the chapter itself, and particularly the prohibition against changes or extensions of such uses. In this sense, we believe that the Land Court's decision was premature. He should be considering this issue relative to subsequent rentals as opposed to indicating that a future rental will have to be non-conforming, and by way...
Can I stop you for a second? I just want to find out, so is your position that this was an enumerated accessory use?
We believe that it would have fallen within the accessory use. We don't really believe we'd get there because we don't think there's a prohibition of a rental to a single tenant under the bylaws as they existed at the time, but certainly, the accessory use, which was expressly within the bylaws, would allow for the renting of five rooms to separate individuals expressly.
But he's not renting rooms, right?
Correct.
He's renting the entire house, so... And doesn't an accessory use have to be a customary use? And Airbnb is not customary. It's a sort of a revolutionary new way of leasing homes, isn't it? I mean, how is it customary?
Well, Airbnb's not a use. Airbnb is a rental agent. Airbnb is a platform.
Renting your entire house out, or even renting rooms on the, sort of on a regular basis on the internet like this, it's pretty dramatically different than when the bylaws were written, isn't it? I mean, Airbnb didn't even exist, this type of arrangement didn't exist, did it?
I think it is, Your Honor, but I think what you're doing is conflating the idea of the manner and the technology that we have available to us to engage in certain types of activities with the activity itself. I mean, if you look at the express provision of the bylaw, which was changed, it permits in that district a single-family residence. The bylaw was changed to change the tenor of the use by indicating it needed to be residential. There isn't any doubt about that, but I guess what I'm saying relative to this is that all the use that we engaged in took place before the order, so...
Let me summarize for one second. Just tell me where I'm wrong. So, this is a single-family residence zoning district, right?
Yes.
Secondly, uses that are not specifically authorized are specifically permitted are not allowed, correct?
That's what the bylaw says.
Well, with the bylaw, that's...
The overwhelming dictate in the bylaw, which I'll repeat because we all know from our readings in school, is almost the exact opposite of the structure you use when looking at personal freedoms. So, we have a bylaw that says that anything not expressly permitted is forbidden. I don't agree with that, and this court has not ruled on that. You have a Land Court case which used it, but I would say to this, is that the permitted use, which is actually outlined, is use of, it's a single-family residence. It doesn't...
But it's not being, single-family residents aren't sort of a mixture of single-family residents and business opportunities that you put out. You know, I'm renting, I'm living in my home, but anyone who wants to come in here can take it for the weekend for $5,000. That's gotta be not a traditional or customary use of a single-family residence.
Well, Your Honor, I understand what you're saying, but I don't believe the bylaws indicate it that way. Look, I'm not arguing that the Town of Linfield or the General Court can't legislate and regulate these things. I'm just arguing that that's what they need to do. I mean, there's no doubt that this has been an important issue in the Commonwealth and across the country. We know that the state legislature has taken up a number of proposals regarding limiting these statewide. We see that the Linfield Zoning Board, in reaction to a problem that existed, enacted a bylaw. That's what they did, and what they said, okay, aside from the issue of accessory use, is that our bylaws implicitly restrict transient rentals of less than 30 days. That was my brother's argument in the, before the ZBA and in the Land Court. It's the Land Court that didn't accept that definition and then did what I think you see in a number of the cases that have developed since Worcester Reeb, Bonnet Venture, straight through to your decision in the Second Worcester case regarding the college group home. They developed this sort of erosion of what a boarding house really was, and so I certainly agree with you that this is, the change in technology is now presenting new challenges, new challenges which need to be addressed in a democratic way with the checks and balances that we have.
But it's not just a new technology. It's also, it's transforming the way a home is, a single-family residence is being utilized, which is converting a single-family residence into basically a business opportunity at the same time, and that doesn't seem to fit within a customary or accessory use. And it's also, it's not a lodging house because you're not renting rooms, you're renting the whole house. It's not a tourist home because that also talks about renting rooms, right? So, it just, I mean, it doesn't seem like we're, I don't know exactly what the rationale we're accepting is, but if we affirm the ZBA on different grounds than the Land Court judge, are there cases that say that's okay if that's our statutory interpretation, or do we have to send that back to the ZBA somehow?
I think, let me answer it this way, if I understand the question. The, you have to, the Land Court judge should have provided deference to the ZBA's view of its own bylaws, and I think you are correct. I don't think it can be fit within the rubric of a tourist home or a boarding house, and I think the Land Court didn't accept the ZBA's position on that. But you have to look at what the ZBA did. The ZBA adopted a definition that wasn't within its bylaws itself. The Little v. Swick case is right to the point on this. There wouldn't have been anything wrong with the Linfield banning transient rentals or banning rentals for less than 30 days. They just didn't do that. And I would say this is an important issue because there are a number of towns in the Commonwealth which are dependent and use seasonal rentals or weekly rentals. Salisbury, Massachusetts, individuals renting their house on the Cape or on the islands. The means to be able to do that needs to be distinguished from the conduct. Today, in Linfield, you can rent a house under the same conditions. It just needs to be for 31 days or the season. And I think that's the difficulty here, is that there was no restriction on renting, and now Your Honor is disturbed, rightly so, by intensity of use. And you're saying the intensity of use is bothering me. It's not the use itself, it's the turnover. Is 30 days in the case of Mr. Styler's rentals over the course of a couple of years, is that, was that prohibited? Our position is simply that it wasn't, and that he would have been entitled under the bylaw as written to that use, and then he would have been required to show the Zoning Board of Appeals for subsequent uses that he didn't change or extend it. Maybe the court is right in fact, but in fact, I think even under Chapter 48, we have a right to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and ask them to provide us with the opportunity to change or extend, and all they need to do is essentially say, "It's not more detrimental." So, you're even taking away that right for us to go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals and say, "You know, we're conducting this activity. We did it before. We appreciate the opportunity to do this. We have a right to ask you."
Mr. Reardon, could I go back? I know it's your secondary argument, but nonetheless, on the prior non-conforming use issue, and Justice Kafka asked you about customary and sort of this emerging technology, but what about incidental? In your last answer, you were talking about the amount of times that your client rented the property, but it's well over 10 times he rented it, I think, well over $100,000, 65 days, and he had, you know, events, like big weddings. How would that fall as far as accessory use into an incidental use? How much, when he's renting that much, how can that be an incidental use?
I think you're, Justice Lowey, I think that the amount of his use over the course of the year is, I wouldn't characterize it as that much. I mean, we're looking at 20 days in 2015, 37 days in 2016, and I believe 12 or 14 in 2017, but relative to your position, you're again focusing not on the use but on the intensity of it, and I think this is the mistake. It is better to allow the Zoning Board of Appeals to deal directly with that by its regulation, but the incidental use is that we don't look at the people or how they use it. We look at the use itself, and the use is a dwelling. That's the incidental use. On a related issue, I hope this can highlight it a bit, when Judge Long was dealing with that issue, he came up with a conclusion that it couldn't even be accessory unless the person lived there, that it needed for it to be incidental, customary, and necessary, the person offering the lodgings needed to actually live on the premises. If you look at the Linfield zoning bylaws regarding accessory use, they have a provision, and I can cite it for you if you'd like, relative to apartments on the property, and in that provision, they require that you live on it, but they acknowledge that the renting of an apartment within the context of a house is customary and incidental. They acknowledge relative to home office. It says, "You must be a resident." It doesn't say it in that case, but if I could step back, if you don't believe this is a boarding house or a tourist house, I don't need accessory use. I just have a rental that they can restrict, as many towns have done. This is a case in Halvey Egerton, the case in Little v. Swick. Transient rentals are prohibited. Short-term rentals are prohibited. My argument to you is simply that that's what they need to do, and then the next step is the step of whether it's a prior non-conforming use if we prevail, and that's when the ZBA has the opportunity to address changes or extensions, and we have the opportunity to ask them to surpass that. So, in this case, we sort of have the right thing. Linfield passed the law, and there isn't any doubt that prior to that, they didn't expressly prohibit the use of a dwelling as a rental unit.
But you're talking about the provision 5.15. Is that what you're talking about right now, about short-term rentals being permissible? Because, I mean, I think that might be what you're talking about, but if you are, you know, Justice Kafka's point about renting a room, you're renting a whole residence. Also, there's requirements that, and it's not being done regularly, and there's sometimes more than five people. So, if that's what you're trying to fit this into, I'm not sure you can chisel it in there.
Oh, the, we're not trying, Mr. Styler rents the residence. I don't think the time is an issue because it's not within the bylaws. You're focused on the disturbing aspect of short-term rentals being short in turnover, but I don't think there's a distinction between a rental that's seven days and one of 10, or a rental which is 30 and one which is 31, other than what this town does. But if you look at Exhibit Volume 1, page 130, which is a separate provision, you can see 5.1, 0.2, 0.3, which addresses owner's occupancy requirement relative to accessory apartments. Accessory apartments are rented to one tenant, and they impose certain conditions. Winfield knows how to impose the conditions. I think Your Honor's point is well-understood. My difference is that what I'm saying is, it's not up to the ZBA to dictate the law. It's up to the Town of Linfield. So, do it, and they did. And I think what's happening is that you're saying, and I think that's the danger.
Because, I'm sorry, you answered my question.
All right. Any further questions of Mr. Reardon? Thank you, counsel. Mr. Mullen, please.
May it please the court. My name is Tom Mullen. I'm the town council for the Town of Linfield. Mr. Styler failed to prove at trial that he had established a non-conforming use of renting out his single-family home on a short-term basis. To do that, he would have had to show that the use he wished to continue had been allowed as a right prior to the amendment of the zoning bylaw in 2016 that expressly forbade short-term rentals, that is rentals of less than 30 days. At all relevant times, the zoning bylaws provided that only uses specifically authorized could be practiced, and in the single-family residence district where Mr. Styler lived, residing in a detached, single-family home was an allowed use, as was any accessory use, and I'll get to that in a minute, but the use that Mr. Styler made was neither residential nor was it accessory.
Mr. Mullen, just, could I?
Did we lose one of the lawyers?
Oh, looks like we have.
I think we did, Justice, but I didn't notice that. Mr. Caneli, do we have Mr. Reardon?
Mr. Reardon cut out, and I'm going to email him now to see, get him back into the courtroom.
If we could stop Mr. Mullen's clock, please.
Will do.
Thank you.
Attorney Reardon back, I apologize for that.
Okay, thank you. We have Mr. Reardon. Mr. Mullen, please continue.
Can I finish?
Well, I think Justice Kafka has finished his question, correct?
Right, so, let me pose the following. So, I understood from Mr. Reardon's argument at the end in particular, that essentially he's arguing, look, it's a, as part of your primary residence, you get out, people often, and even customarily, rent out their place periodically. The classic example is the summer rental. You know, people own houses on the Cape, they rent them out for a week in the summer or two weeks. Does the town need to specifically prohibit that, or is, I understand your argument, this is not a lodging house or a tourist home. I understand some other things, but it seems like that may be his best argument. Now, Airbnb's may be different, but why is this summer rental type prohibited here?
It's not prohibited. It's rather that it was Mr. Styler's burden at trial to prove it, and there was zero evidence that such rentals were customary in Linfield. In one of the Land Court cases I cited, Di Giovanni versus Pope...
Well, I think Justice Kafka has finished his question, correct?
No, 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 I'm listening. Mr. Mullen's got my question. I understood from Mr. Reardon's argument at the end in particular, that essentially he's arguing, look, we've got feedback now going on, it looks like.
We don't hear it.
We don't hear, I think...
Okay, maybe I was getting, sorry, okay.
I'm sorry, are you done with your question?
Yeah.
So, there was no evidence here of any customary, of any custom in Linfield of the rental, seasonal or otherwise, of single-family homes. I was pointing, by contrast, to Di Giovanni versus Pope, where Justice Piper found that in a town that was on the Cape, there was evidence, or it was accepted by the parties, that there was such custom, and the question there focused instead on whether, if the people who rented the property for brief periods used it as a wedding site, whether that would be customary, and the judge found there was no such evidence.
Can I just make sure I understand, because I thought that the first argument is that there is nothing that specifically says you can't do this. So, does customary really fit into that? I thought this is about whether it was something that was okay...
Okay.
...under the bylaws.
So, there are two points here. First is that our bylaw said, "If it's not specifically allowed, you can't do it," and yes, there is nothing here that specifically allows the renting out for short periods of your single-family home. And second, the bylaw does say that in a residential district, you may make any accessory use of your home, but it defines accessory as being customary and incidental, and so this gets to Justice Kafka's question, I think. If there had been evidence at trial that it was customary for people to rent out their home for brief periods of time in Linfield, we'd be in a different universe. But there was no basis either to say that it's available, that this particular use was available as a right, or that it was available because it was an accessory use to an allowed use. If I may, I think it's very important to get into the weeds here about exactly what was done with this property during the 13 times in 22 months that it was rented out. The rentals were for two days to 15 days, the median being four days, but the purpose of the rental was never merely residential. That is, nobody ever rented the house just to live there. It was instead marketed and used for commercial purposes. In five cases, the use was blatantly business-related, twice as a business retreat, twice for a photo shoot, and once for a corporate board meeting. In another case, the one that ended up involving a 100-person party and a murder, it was supposed to be a college reunion, and in the other seven cases, it was for family reunions. None of these rentals constituted a residential use. Now, let me anticipate an objection. There is nothing that prevents residents in the single-family district from holding family reunions at their home, of course, but when they do, such parties are not the main use of the home. It's one thing when people who live in a house hold a party for their family. It's another when you rent out your house so that the renters can hold a party. The former is an incident of residence. The latter is a business, and I should point out that renting space specifically for a party is a commercial use and is treated as such under our zoning bylaws because it was a use expressly allowed in the commercial district. I'd point to...
Mr. Mullen, why do we care what the end user does? Because the business use is that of which the homeowner does. So, whether they rent it to someone who is on family vacation versus a business retreat, why does that matter?
Well, I think it does matter because you couldn't, Mr. Styler couldn't, for example, rent it to somebody who would use the property to run a business. He couldn't open a factory in the house for a weekend, for example. Okay, so, the thing that's actually done, the use that is made of the property by the renter is itself relevant, and I think frankly, it makes for the easiest way to resolve this case, because in every single instance, all of the 13, the use that was made of the property was not purely residential. It would be different, it might be a different case, if people had come in here to rent the property for three weeks so that they could visit their ailing relative at Mass General, you know? But that's not how it was marketed, not how it was used.
Mr. Mullen, and I think your articulation of this is probably even better than the ZBA's, the Land Court judges, and, but it's a little different. Do we have cases that we can turn to where we're affirming both the ZBA and the Land Court, but the reasoning, your reasoning sort of is different from both the Building Inspector, the ZBA, and the Land Court. It may be actually a much better interpretation of the statute, but do we have cases like that where we can turn to? Because I know the standard review here is confusing.
So, I know that in an appeal to, say, the Land Court or the Superior Court under 4817, there's ample authority for the proposition that the court can affirm the decision of the ZBA on a different theory than that advanced by the ZBA.
Okay.
Frankly, I couldn't cite you to a case that says the SJC can affirm the Land Court on a theory different than the Land Court advanced. I don't really see why not. You can just get specific about the reason why you think the conclusion was correct, but for a different reason.
I know that we're, the Land Court decides the facts, and the facts here are undisputed. It's really the statutory interpretation that we're struggling with, meaning the bylaw interpretation.
So, if I can just finish one thought about the bylaw, I wanted to point, Your Honors, to Volume 1 of the Record Appendix, page 125, and that is part of the bylaw. It's Section 4.4.3, and that specifically allows, in the commercial district, but not elsewhere, places of amusement or assembly. So, to whatever extent people were renting this property to use it for the throwing of parties, then I would say that it's obviously in the wrong district. Quite apart from this, there's a further argument to be made that even the short-term rental for purely residential purposes, say somebody who just wanted to sleep in Linfield for a week, there are Land Court cases holding that short-term rental constitutes a business use of real estate in and of itself, no matter what the renter does on the property. And I point you to Plymouth versus Swike, which is one of the cases in my addendum, where the Land Court held that the owner of a two-family house who lived in one unit and rented out the other on a weekly basis in the summer, those rentals constituted an inherently commercial use of the premises, not permitted in the single-family residence district. And getting back to the point Justice Kafka asked about earlier, if there had been evidence there that it was customary to rent out in that particular town for a week, on a weekly basis, that would have been a different case, but that wasn't the case in Plymouth versus Swike. Similarly, in Corey versus Rector, another Land Court case, an applicant planned to cease the use of a cottage as a... an applicant planned to cease the use of a cottage as a residence and start renting it out to short-term leases. And the court treated that as a conversion from a residential to a commercial use. And as Justice Long found below, short-term rentals have impacts on the neighborhood that are different from and greater than long-term rental or ownership for residential purposes. People who rent for a couple of days are likely to be less concerned about maintaining the property and maintaining relations with neighbors than the constant influx of new faces, new vehicles is disruptive to the neighborhood.
Mr. Mullen, I think Justice Link has a question, please.
I, I do, Mr. Mullen. I wonder if you could explain to me. I'm a little confused here. I know that the bylaws basically say that, you know, you have to have a specific permission in the bylaws before any use is a permissible use, right? That the, that unless you have, you can point to something specifically authorizing it, it's not authorized, right? That's the way it goes?
Right.
Yeah, okay. So what is it, was it possible then for somebody to claim, listen, I always rented my house out in the summertime. You know, I made a lot of money on it. I always allowed. Was that, is that, is that specifically authorized in the, in the zoning bylaws?
No, it's not.
So anyone who did that really was also in violation of the zoning laws unless they had somehow a permission to do that, right?
Anybody who did that would be in violation unless they could show that it was an accessory use. But for that, they'd have to make, show proof that it was a customary, a customary in Linfield for people in the residential district to do that. And that it was incidental to their primary use, which was to live in the house. And there was.
How about, how about, I'm sorry about this. I just wanted to, I just tried to understand this a little better. How about somebody who wanted to rent their house out for a year? Because they had to go to, I don't know, they were going to Europe for a year. They'd been shipped there for their job and they wanted to rent the house out for a year. Could they do that?
Yeah, they could. And this gets to the, the difficulty in, in this case, which is long-term rentals are not something that we forbid, or even that I think we could forbid. You know, we can't, we can't prevent people from living in a house. We don't care whether they live in a house because they are the owner or the renter. But we do care about the use of that house. And if it is, if there's constant turnover, if you have a lot of strangers coming in and coming out all the time, then you have something closer to a hotel use, and it's more commercial in nature and disruptive, as Justice Long found. If on the other hand, you have people who are living there, then it's a residential use. And I, I get back to the, my earlier point that I think the easiest way to resolve this case is to look closely at those facts and say, every single use made by every single one of these renters was itself a commercial use. Either blatantly commercial, like a corporate board meeting, or it was rented just for a party. And there's another section entirely of the zoning bylaws for renting a building for a party.
Okay. That being so, why did you need to amend the bylaws?
Well, to, to make it absolutely clear, to, to codify it. And if I, you know, the legislature, around the same time or shortly after that, also passed legislation about 30-day rentals. So at some point, we just wanted to achieve clarity through codification.
Okay, the fact that you did this doesn't have any, it doesn't have any implication as to the interpretation of the zoning bylaws that were in effect at the time. That Mr. Riden's client is claiming to have the right to have this grandfathered use.
I don't believe it does.
Okay.
One last question.
Do you have any cases from out of the Commonwealth? Do you have any common, extra Commonwealth cases outside of Commonwealth? Are there cases how they handle the situation?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
One last question, Mr. Mullen. So how does, how does an ordinary resident figure out what's customary here? I mean, I, you've probably been town council for a long time. I, I even vaguely remember you, maybe even an elected official there. So you may have a sense of what the custom is in Linfield. But how does an ordinary person make these types of distinctions? I mean, you may be right that this is so far on the spectrum. It's easy to know it's different. But like these issues about how long you can rent your house and stuff like that, how, how does a normal person figure that out?
So as a practical matter, the easiest, you know, the, the way this works out is you typically call the building inspector and you, you ask, how do you treat these issues? And as a legal matter, you can ask the building inspector for a ruling on paper. And he has to answer you within, I think it's 14 days. And if you're dissatisfied with his answer, you can take it to the ZBA and, and their decision under section eight of 48 is itself appealable to court.
Anything further for Mr. Mullen? Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Your Honor.